International Property Maintenance Code Meeting, March 10th, 2025, 4:00. We'll come to order at 4:00 P.M. Members Bill Stuckert, Aaron Sherick, Jared Miller, Ken Long, Adam Brazil, Dan Wireball, Ray Thidoff, Clarissa Slater, James Mee, Chair. First up is public participation.
Oh, I'm just interested in getting up to speed. I've lived in Bucyrus since the middle of 2015. The whole time I bought property in 2007, but I do have a property across the street from mine that is in really bad shape.
Okay, you need to come up to the mic and state your...
No, no, I'm not ready to...
Okay, I have public participation at the end, too.
Okay. What I really would like is, is there a website or a place where the rules or the maintenance guidelines or codes are...
Yeah, I'll talk to you about that after the meeting. That's okay.
And that's really where I want to start. I want to look at that.
Okay. Approval of the minutes, can I have a motion for the approval of the minutes for June 11th, 2024 Special Ad Hoc Meeting?
So...
Thank you, Ray.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes? So, this 2012 Property Maintenance Code, 2024 Property Maintenance Code, draft legislation adopting the 2024 International Property Maintenance Code. Does anybody have anything? Anybody want to discuss anything?
I have a question.
Yes, sir. Ma'am.
That's all right. Better, closer vote. So with the 2024 International Property Maintenance Code, the proposal is to have that referenced as a governing document in the legislation we're passing, correct? Is that where we left off?
Yes. And after extensive talks with Mr. Goldberg, the 2024 Property Maintenance Code is not enforceable in Bucyrus. There's a lot of aspects, it's not enforceable. So with my talks with him, we want to take the Ratliff version that we've been working on all this time and take the 2024 code and have him go through it and give us a piece of legislation that's for the Bucyrus Property Maintenance Code. This way, 100% enforceable. Everybody on board with that? Is there any questions?
I kind of had a similar idea myself. I thought because the code itself is updated, I think we're all aware that it does create issues when they update the international version, as far as references that, how it creates disconnect sometimes, gets us in the situation that we're in. So my idea was to, similarly, to go through the 2024 version. What I think, what my thoughts as a citizen and now on the committee is that I think for the public's sake of transparency, which everyone likes to talk about, I thought it would be a good idea if there were notes included as we're going through this, whether it's Brandon or us as a committee, if we could make a note or at least have some sort of documentation as to if we're going to omit parts, if parts are going to be removed, a quick note that explains why. Why does it, you know, why is it a good fit for Bucyrus? Whether it be unnecessary or not applicable because of climate, just to explain to the citizens, you know, why we've removed parts of that so that we ultimately do have a piece that's, you know, starts from the 2024 code and cross-references the Ratliff Code. But when we have that final document, I think it would be nice to just have a note that explains, you know, if you don't see it and it's in the international code, here's why we took it out.
Okay.
If you had notes...
Yeah, and I think that would explain, if Brandon's the one that creates those, that would also explain to us if we're going to have a debate about any topic or anything, any additions. I think it would just answer our questions from the get-go if just a little note was included that explains, you know, the changes that are made. I was going to volunteer to go through the 2024 code myself, but I know he's already...
But see, this is the great thing about this, is we have, you go through it, you have ideas, you email Brian Goldberg, our law director, and he'll take that into consideration and put that in there. That way, when you get that piece of legislation he's done with, you can say, hey, what about this? I mentioned this, why isn't this in here? Or vice versa, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Why did you put this in here when I didn't think it was in here? Should be in there.
Yeah, my thought was, I know a couple of people have mentioned that it's a pretty lengthy document, and I agree it is, but I had already started to kind of look through that and kind of start from the beginning and just go straight through. I'm not even referencing off of Ratliff's Code. I'm just starting fresh with a pair of, you know, Bucyrus eyes on it, so that's where I'm at with it.
Okay.
Chair.
Yes.
Because I'm the one that got this whole bullwhack started again with presenting to council that we formed this ad hoc committee, then partly being because of too much confusion as to who actually is responsible for property maintenance, and also the fact that there are so many of the codes in the IPMC that are really just nitpick codes and rules. And Mr. Ratliff presented council with a pretty good draft of a code to be adopted by council for the city of Bucyrus, and I felt that that was a good starting point for us to go through and, as you're saying, nitpick it and come up with our own city code. So really, I think that's where we need to go is what you're suggesting, have Mr. Goldberg go through that and put that together with any of the IPMC codes that he feels is necessary for us. One of the issues that we've had in past park and department meetings is the fact that our code enforcement officer, Mr. Grove, stated that the IPMC is what he has to follow when he goes out and makes his investigations, inspections. So I think one of the issues of the last appeal meeting that we had was one of the issues of Mr. Long, I think it was the issue of the window latches. That's really a nitpicking thing, something that, you know, I don't think that we're really even looking at, you know, that's not really that big of a deal of a public safety issue. Basically, this is all for us for public safety.
Right. Dan, you got some? Got anything? You were shuffling papers.
No, no, I just, I had done, I had done some homework. I don't know if we're at that yet, so I'll just wait. No, I think, yeah, we did the, I think the 12, and then Ratliff went in and took the things out that were not, you know, like you say, the latches and different things. But, yeah, but well, I guess, a lot of people think we're, I wanted to say this at some point, so I'll just say now, a lot of people thought we're coming up here and we're going to come down on people, but I think this gentleman here is going to have the answer of what we really wanted. It sounds like he may have a property and there's properties nearby that aren't so great. I have a rental that the property next to mine is in pretty bad shape, but we, they need some type of teeth to get in there and actually, we'd have rules, I guess. But we're not going out looking for people's houses. All, we're just setting up the rules so that when there's a complaint, then the code enforcement officer has the ability to cite these people and things. If we don't have the rules, then it's just a matter of opinion at that point, so...
Yeah, and to both your points, it's like, we don't want anybody nitpicking over that. That's what we want to get away from.
Right.
But it's more public safety. Ray?
Were you looking at a rough draft right here from Mr. Goldberg? Is that what this is? Is he already...
That, no, that rough draft is from Ratliff.
Okay.
That was started years ago. It's, I don't believe it was ever finished. So that's why I want the law director to take this, take the International Property Maintenance Code, and make them for a Bucyrus Property Maintenance Code. That way, it would be just like legislation coming to council. He brings it back to us, this ad hoc committee, then we can pick it apart from then on. If we have any other ideas, we can email Mr. Goldberg and he will add those in there or take them out. If they're enforceable, he might put them in there or he might take them out, and he'll have a reason for that.
There are changes in here, though, that we had already discussed.
We may, yes.
Their high...
And he's got all those. Miranda Hasen sent them to him. Ken?
Will you answer my first question? I didn't know if there was a Ratliff version out. I wasn't aware this was this, so that's good. I think the big question in the room is going to be, you know, timeline, you know, let's just say there's 100 pages that has to be reviewed. I mean, is it reasonable that we could get through 10 pages every two weeks, a month, whatever? That way, I know we're all based on, you know, Brad's got a lot of stuff on his plate, and so I don't know how much of his time he can spend on this. So I'm just trying to see if there's any idea of a realistic...
Okay, here's my timeline. I'll be done with Ward 4 at the end of the year. I don't know if I'll be sitting on it again, but I want this done by then, so 10 months.
Okay. I'm not putting, I'm not, I'm asking, Brad's working, okay?
I know.
I don't understand how he does what he does, so, but I'm not sure if he has the ability to put the time in to try to sort all this stuff out.
Yeah.
So just bring up a concern. It's not because of his ability, it's just time.
And he text Brandon today, he said he wouldn't be here because he was in court, but he was okay with anything that this ad hoc committee laid on him. Clarissa?
Yeah, so I have a couple of thoughts. The first one is to Ken's point about the timeline. I think it would be beneficial if we put ourselves under some sort of guidelines. I don't know, like you said, like 10 pages, you know, we review the first 10, we provide our notes, and then we go from there. I don't think that's a bad idea, and then that way we can set expectations of how much time we should be expecting, like how often we should be coming to meetings. I think that's a good expectation. I also, just so for transparency purposes, I had a couple, looking through this, the discussions we had last time, looking at the IPMC, there was a couple of things that I wanted to just put on the record. The first is, I think that we have to consider the populations that this affect. I'm aware most of you are property owners, and some of you are also landlords, so I wanted just to lay out that what I see, the biggest people that this is affecting are property owners, right? Just people who live in their houses, the landlords that own property and rent them out, and also, you know, commercial property owners would be one as well. And then I think we also have to consider the individuals who be living in leased properties and the vulnerable populations that would be entitled under that as well. So if someone has a guardianship, we're talking about children. So I reached out to Job and Family Services and Adult Protective Services and posed the question of preventing like a secular cycle, secular cycle, a cycle of pattern of behavior. So if someone moves out because there's problems or complaints are made for vulnerable parties, how can we give them the teeth to hold not only the people who are leasing those properties, but also the owners if it comes, if it raises to that point? And where basically their floor is, so that the thought process that I had was the concern would be vulnerable populations being in a position where, you know, the individual who's either leasing the property or responsible for them would be held accountable, you know, for neglect or endangerment. But how do we stop those individuals from either being evicted, or if they end up in jail, or, you know, they're moved out of that property? How do we stop the cycle of that continuing for them to be able to be in tandem, hold that standard for both people who are leasing the property and people who are owning? If it raises to the level of not just condition where we're talking about cleanliness or something that would be on the part of the leasing, that there would be penalties for property owners if minimum standards of living weren't held. So I did get...
Minimum standards of living because of the landlords or minimum standard of living because of the person living there?
So minimum standards of living for the person living there would be the jurisdiction of that agency. So they would be held accountable if it's a situation where, either way, they're held accountable. So if it's the property condition, let's say there's a hole in the floor, the stairs are falling apart, there's mold, there's stuff like that. The individual who's responsible for, or guardianship of whomever, would be held responsible for the living conditions in which someone is being, is living, no matter what. They have their own rules and standards, right? But the issue is if it raises to the property maintenance of the owner, so something that isn't in control of the leasing, so the actual property itself, let's say it's not from, I don't know, animal excrement or, you know, something to that extent, if it goes to the actual building issue, that that, it can help the leases who want to provide safe housing to also be able to work with the property owner and them to be held to the same standard. Our Property Maintenance Code has the ability to do that if proper penalties are put in place. So I spoke to, well, I've been playing phone tag with an individual named Richard, and I can get his last name, from Adult Protective Services, and he's very interested to give his perspective on it. He said he was unable to attend the meeting today because of a conflict, but there is that issue where we're already overburdening, overburdened systems. So just being able to have that streamlined, same standards being held for both the person who's the guardian of the at-risk individual, so, or minor, or person under guardianship, and the...
But you're getting on a case-by-case basis, and we can't...
It wouldn't be a case-by-case basis. It's basically...
Okay, just, I mean, I can give you all kinds of incidents. If somebody cuts a hole in my floor and I don't know about it and they done it without my permission, and that may be whatever reason, they're getting kicked out. I'm removing that person, those people from that property regardless because they destroyed my property.
Right. We're talking about intentionally damaging or neglect of maintenance on the leasing's part. What I'm saying is that those two pieces have to be held to the same standard. Because even so, here's the, here's the long and skinny of it. If you have a destructive tenant, if you have written a good lease contract, you would have the ability to take that individual to court, right? So what I'm saying is that you would be able to have the ability to try to recoup those losses. A separate issue to that would be if it is a state of neglect on the, on the property owner's part, to where they move in or the condition deteriorates to a point where, I mean, we've seen the lipstick and rouge that some people do on property, it happens, and they're there a couple of months and they realize that things weren't fixed properly. They were just made to look good. So the concern is just ensuring that those two standards are at the same. If you have, if you have someone who's being destructive, that's one thing, and I'm not saying that you're a bad landlord, so please don't internalize it, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that this just holds a standard to everybody to where they can be held accountable. So it could be a conversation that these agencies can have, not only with the person who's leasing the property or responsible for the at-risk groups, but also the property owner to basically know this is what we have to hold you accountable if it's not followed through with.
Have you seen anything in 2020, or the International Property Maintenance Code, whichever one it may be, that addresses that?
I have not seen anything with penalty that addresses it, because right now I believe it's just written as a minor misdemeanor, $150 fine. So my thought was there would have to be some sort of, based off this section, it's this penalty based off of the, you know, maybe more, have a little bit more demarcation.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're starting from scratch.
Right. But the 20, but if you're saying that the 20, right now, we have a conversation that's unenforceable, correct? And I've also had this conversation with Brandon, and he seems amenable to looking into this. But I don't think it's a conversation we can just have unilaterally. I think it's something that we have to have a discussion with the agencies that have this issue. So I don't want it to seem that I'm overburdening anybody, but theoretically could be a situation where, and it has occurred, where property is not being maintained or has been neglected maintenance-wise and has led problem for the leasing. And you're right, it happens in inverse, but that's where you would need to make sure you have a lawyer or somebody who's constructing your contracts to where you can get a situation where you can possibly recoup your losses. So it's kind of a two sides of the same coin, is what I'm trying to say, that both of those have to be equitable.
In the case where I'm evicting somebody, it's usually for non-payment or for rent.
See, and this...
But it costs me $1,000 to get rid of them.
Right.
I mean...
I understand your perspective. I'm just saying that we have to be, to consider how this affects all residents and citizens, not just that of those who own property. I'm not saying that is anyone, and I don't think anyone's doing that intentionally. I'm just saying that we all each come with our own perspective, and sometimes we have to look outside of it to make sure that we're not creating unequitable legislation.
Okay. It has to be equitable, or there's no reason to have it.
Right. And currently, as it's been stated, it's hard to enforce as it is, so...
We want everything that's in the Bucyrus Property Maintenance Code, in the end, in the end, legislation that's enforceable.
Right.
If it's not enforceable, we don't want it in there.
Correct.
Okay.
I know there's just been other conversations about, we're just worried about public safety, but I mean, if you're looking at it as a whole, we have to think about these scenarios where people who may not have a voice or may be in a unequitable position could be affected by what we're passing. I'm only trying to bring a perspective to the table that may not have been considered.
And I'm not sure, but I think there's programs out there, if their yard's not being mowed or something like that, that they'll come in and mow their yard for them and stuff.
And that's, I mean, and that's talking about the external property. I'm just stating that there has been situations where complaints have been made, in which the person who's responsible for leasing that property is held accountable because they legally have to provide a safe living place, right? But if they're locked into a lease, their hands are tied. They may not have the ability to break that lease or to find new housing or to pay for another deposit. What I'm saying is that it should be, if a property is unsafe, either at the time of rental or deteriorates over time, like we have people who lease for years, right? It ultimately has to be, is this the leasing's issue? Is it a landlord issue? Is it both? And then making sure that, either way, the maintenance has to be done for these individuals. That's what I'm trying to say.
All right. To better explain this, you're going to work with Brandon on this section of the Bucyrus Property Maintenance Code?
Yeah, that's my...
Because you're splitting hairs, I mean...
I don't think it's really splitting hairs because it's clearly already an issue.
Because it goes from individual, it goes from landlord to landlord, to individual to individual, and that's why I think it's really tough.
So, right, because the leasing's, by the state statutes, by the administrative codes that are placed by these agencies, are already held accountable. Even if it's a situation where, I spoke to someone who was a caseworker at Job and Family Services, and they stated, "We have problems all the time where a complaint is filed on a property, and we try to connect with the landlord, or we tell the leasing that has to change." And the leasing says, "I've talked to the landlord, I haven't heard anything back. I've talked to the landlord, I haven't heard anything back. I've talked to the landlord, I haven't heard anything back." And it's a situation where they're eventually going to have to be held accountable for that unsafe living condition, the leasing that's responsible for whomever the at-risk population is, right? But if this is a situation where they're like, this, I'm not getting anywhere, now I have to come up with the equity to move, that property is now vacant and then is re-leased, and then we're doing the same thing over and over again, to where it's creating additional cases for the same property, and it may just be a completely different group of people because these things, you see what I'm trying to say?
Okay, yes.
Okay. I know it's kind of deep, I apologize, but...
Adam, what do you think?
Well, I was just, if I could provide maybe a bit of clarity, I think some of what I think you're speaking on has a separate section of law under like the homeownership and housing laws. So I think a lot of, a lot of the concerns of what are the consequences, I think those might be covered under a whole section of law that this committee isn't here to address. And also, I think to maybe illustrate, I think Clarissa's concerns, I think Jim, we'll see those come up as we're going through the code, where I think more than anything, just a call to just remember that there are people that don't own the property. I think just a call to, or a reminder to keep them in mind.
See outside perspectives of...
I think that would, it would be more, more clearly illustrated as we're going through the code to give an example of, oh, well, let's remember how these people feel. So I think we'll see that as we go through it line by line.
Anybody else?
I just have a comment.
Sure.
She, we should mention about being on the record. There's one thing I've discussed a couple of different times, and we're at another meeting, so here we are. On the record, I'd like to make sure there's something about the inspector's educational requirement to be an inspector, because in my opinion, that's at least 50% of the problem.
So that's up to the administration.
Please?
That's up to the administration.
Okay, where is that in writing?
I do think it's in there.
It's, you want me to find it?
The property maintenance will be, will be...
Is that in the International Property Maintenance Code?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. I'll find that.
Required section would be to define the code enforcement officer.
Right, it defines the...
I don't think it specifies the type of education or degree or anything that is required. Just things that they need to be pretty much capable.
That's in, yeah, capable and addressed by the administration. Vacant property registration, Greg White had something on that. I'm pretty sure Miranda's got that, if anybody needs a copy of it.
Is that...
So should there be a difference between vacant property registration on a rental property or commercial, or is rental property's actually commercial? Any thoughts?
If it's some residential, it would be a residential unit. Wouldn't that be separate then?
So it wouldn't be a commercial. So we need a separate piece of legislation going through council that... So we need a separate piece of legislation going through council that addresses commercial properties.
I would offer if you consider the intent, the purpose in my opinion of rental properties for residential units would be to provide a list to housing services. These are available rentals. So I think that would be the only benefit to having such a list is, you know, here's available homes, we could provide this to agencies that provide housing versus commercial properties, whether it be business locations or anything. I think the purpose of having a list for that would be to, to hand that off to places like agencies that, you know, have economic development. So I think that the lists have separate functions or separate benefits. So I agree, I think that they should stay separate.
Two separate ones. Well, there's, there's another benefit to the tax office, they can keep track of who's living where, so if we need to track them down for back taxes. So that's why they wanted one too.
True, true.
But that changes the tenant registry, not the property registry.
Well, we have to fill out the tenant registry now anyway, right? You get a slip of paper every year on that.
Statement, did we run that, we saw these have a specific residence?
Yes, just names.
You're supposed to.
I think there was a fine attached to that, wasn't there?
I know I got one, I don't think I ever filled it out.
We're looking after you, brother.
Are we, just a, just a, just a question here, with the, it says, you know, it's referred as vacant property registration. Could it be? Could it have different, I don't want to say chapters, but could it have different sections applying to different property types? Or does it have to be a whole legislation? So you could have vacant units, vacant property, or vacant residential property and vacant commercial property?
It could be like A, B, C, like section A, section A, section B, section C. That's what I was looking for, I didn't see it in here.
All I see back there in the back is a statement of complaint.
Yeah.
Notice of violation.
I see page 16, section 109, that's mentioned abandoned or foreclosed property registration.
What would abandoned be?
16.
109.
109 dot, on page 16?
Page 16, legislative findings.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the whole section is about that. Or maybe you were looking for something more specific than I identified.
I think, I don't know, but I was thinking that it was this ordinance, this draft legislation.
What section or what?
No, it's a separate piece of legislation.
Okay.
Mr. Ratliff had brought this up, wanted to keep an eye. He thought if we paid, I can't.
I see it now.
But you pay a fee to leave your house empty. And every year you had to pay that fee again.
As long as your house was empty.
As long as it was empty, yeah, you could just pay a fee. Now, there were stipulations that, hey, if you're going to, and we talked about the snowbirds that go to Florida, you have, you know, that gets waved and different things. But the idea was, and this spells it out pretty good, if you, I don't know if everyone has that, I had it.
Is it the second page you're looking, the second?
It said, it's, I don't know if we ever passed it or not when he was here.
So you just brought that legislation here? You just, it's not, yeah, it's not in our pack, it's here.
It was, I don't know, it's what she gave me before this first time.
Yeah, who knows, well, that's after myself.
It was on here, 2023, I guess. Jenny Vermillion was the president. But we began talking about it, but this, I think this spells it out, so I don't know.
It was in an email, I just had it pulled up.
Yeah. Chapters 1361 vacant structure registration. So some of the things he mentioned was, you know, is there any, if we know this house is vacant, there's a fire in there, then the firemen aren't going to go, you know.
Endangering themselves.
Endangering themselves. If there's people living there, it's supposed to be vacant, you know, or there's waters in there. There were different, different aspects that he thought this property registration would be beneficial. But I think the biggest one was that if people have an empty house and they have to pay so much every month, either they're going to get it fixed up, rent it, or sell it and then it doesn't become derelict, fall apart, and then the city has to tear it down.
And I know there was a lot of controversy over what caused that. And I'm just going to ask the snowbird that we got here that went to Arizona for the last couple of months, did you shut your water off when you went on vacation? Did you shut anything off?
Just my main, then house, it's always shut off, yeah.
Okay, so you didn't have, go to the water department and have it shut off?
I did not.
Okay.
No.
So.
The cost of drinking back home would have been more than what my double please.
Yeah. So that was never passed, Dan, right?
I don't believe, I think he left and went to his new job or something before we got him.
So that never got a number or anything, right?
No. It was from, well, Jenny was, so it's been at least a year ago, Jenny.
Give me a date so I can track it.
It doesn't have a date on here, it just says.
We were given it last time, I don't, I don't have my personal copy of it.
Property Maintenance Code, correct?
No, it's Vacants, Chapter 1361 Vacant Structure Registration, Enacting and Adopting Chapter 1361 Entitled Vacant, Vacant Structure Registration under Title VII, Entitled Housing and Property Maintenance Code, under Part 13, Entitled Building Code, modified, on its incidence. So I think he's just adding another chapter to what's in the.
Yeah.
I believe we discussed this in our June of 2024 meeting before. At that time, I know I even have a note here online that talked about the difference from the commercial and the residential structures and I think we were discussing the possibility of no fee for the residential structure that's empty. Jim, I think you possibly even suggested that.
Maybe.
And I think that was for residential structures of four units or less.
I gotta look that up.
I remember this conversation.
Because it got lost in.
Anything, anything that would be considered commercial.
Yeah, it got lost in my paperwork somewhere. Four units or less. All right, Clarissa, going back to our discussion while we go, what? What can I label that as?
I don't think there really is a label because it's just something that needs to be considered throughout the continuity of the document. So just a perspective that maybe isn't being considered. Considerations for at-risk populations. Vulnerable. I'm not sure what word you want to use. And the only other note that I have from that is that currently I see that there is some mention of attractive nuisance, but it mostly talks about the existence of the property. So there's a property down by the river on Tiffin Street that has the exterior, has things that are attractive nuisances. There's a.
Peeling paint?
Like a trampoline that's located right next to the river on a rocky, unkempt yard full of garbage. So I saw one mentioned, but it's talking about the structure itself. So just like, it would be similar to like, there's mention of the pool and having, having enclosed fence, things that would be attractive to juveniles, like an abandoned, Winnebago with no door that they could climb around in and who knows what finds or.
If it doesn't have a door, they're not going to get locked inside.
Well, no, but it might fall through the floor, you don't know. So attractive nuisance would be a good specialization of that.
Anything else we want to hit on while we're here? No, nothing?
I kind of, I'm having a problem with what's enforceable and what's not enforceable. I thought I seen Brandon come in, but he must have left again. I'm kind of wondering how he determines what's enforceable and what's not.
I think that's a good point. As I was saying, that's why I kind of wanted to also go through the code. I assume what we'll do is whether selecting a code, we'll go through line by line each thing and discuss it as a committee. So I think just in order to be prepared, that's why my thought was to myself go through the code and have notes for, if there's something that's unenforceable, for instance, I'd make a note of, oh, this, this could apply to us so that we could look at that, bring it to committee and I assume what you'd like is for, you know.
I want to know what makes it enforceable and what doesn't, from a lawyer's point of view, I guess.
Yeah, I think my goal for next time at least is to have an answer to that question for kind of each thing in the whole code.
Yeah.
Because I agree, I think hearing not just from Brandon, but from people that have experience, I mean, Brandon's the expert at the language of law like this. But as far as maintaining a property, I think that's why we are the committee, that it shouldn't just be a law director that passes.
Just a quick point of order, do we want to admit Aaron to the meeting? Aaron, do you want to admit?
You want to come up?
Do we have a motion or?
No, this is not our committee, we don't need all that. Come on in. Speaking of Aaron, I would like to make the rest of our meetings at 5 o'clock instead of 4 o'clock. That way we can get more people here.
I agree with that.
Thank you. Oh, can I have a motion?
I will make a motion. The hard meeting start at 5 o'clock.
I'll second the motion.
Got a first, you got a motion, got a second? Almost said seconded it.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So going in, Ray was talking about what's enforceable and what's not, but I don't know. I mean, this, anything's enforceable, I guess, but these are, when we first started looking at this back in whatever, last century, we, I figured I'd open this up. Bathroom and toilet rooms. This is for ventilation, section 403. Bathrooms and toilet rooms. Every bathroom and toilet room shall comply with ventilation requirements for habitable spaces as required in section 403.1, except that a window should not be required in such spaces equipped with a mechanical ventilation system. So yeah, how, how are you going to enforce that? And I can go on. But air exhausted by a mechanical ventilation system from bathroom or toilet room shall discharge to the outdoors and shall not be recirculated. But I don't think we have the ability. It made, it made me enforceable, but I don't think anyone's going to go around and check bathroom ventilation fans, you know, in BESARAS. It just doesn't make sense. So that's something that.
That falls, I feel like what Clarissa's saying, if you got sewer gases coming into a house and this poor lady that's living there with 13 of her kids calls up and says, "Hey."
Yeah.
"My bathroom's not ventilated."
And there's a, there's a legal way to put that money in escrow until the landlord fixes it. Several of us are landlords and maybe this has happened to us, but a lot of the people don't do that. There are legal remedies to get that taken care of.
I think what it sounds like to me is, because there's a very good purpose for that rule, I think, but I, when you, when you're questioning Ray, the unenforceable, I think more what you're describing, Dan, is inspectable versus enforceable. I think we can enforce anything in the code because the code will say how it's enforced, but in a situation like event, like how do you check event? And that's not being enforced, that's, you know, noticed or inspected. So I think only when we get to the point that an inspection is called for, that's when you could actually thoroughly check, but.
And, and that's kind of what my point was too, is that, you know, you're talking about sewer gases. I'm thinking like mold. So if it's, if it's create this, you know, we're, we're basing this off of when a complaint is filed or an issue occurs. That's what initiates this entire thing. We're not going to be knocking down people's doors and saying, you know. So I think that's the perspective that we also have to take it from. If, if you have an issue that's clearly causing a problem, somebody, you know, the inspector comes in or the, help me with this title right now because I can't think of it. Maintenance, property code enforcement officer comes in.
CEO.
And sees that, yeah, you have extensive mold growth because when they run the showers, you're, you have a fan, but it's just going right up to your.
Attic.
Your, your attic or, you know.
Your wall.
The ceiling above, so, you know, that's where it's like, okay, well, something has to change and then that's where that conversation happens. I don't think we're going to be, you know, Gordon Grubbs isn't going to walk into your building and start putting snakes up your, cameras up your vents and seeing how everything works.
Yeah, we can't afford the cameras, so. Any more discussion? I'd like a motion to have our law director, Brandon Goldberg, to take the Ratliff version plus the 2024 version, put it all together and give us something. And that includes vacant property registration, you can take a look at that and go through it, plus the complaint they got back here in the back.
So moved.
Notice of violation. I have a motion. By the second?
I have a question.
It's up for discussion.
Would we be able to provide our specific, would that include in the motion any specific notes that we can refer over to?
You can email Brandon Goldberg anytime you want about anything you want.
Okay. So make sure that, that wasn't like where we left off in the discussion, like if correspondence is allowed to.
Yeah, correspondence is allowed. So just initial it at the top, International Property Maintenance Code, IMPC or something like that, so he knows what it is. And he'll have all those in one file. That way when he works on it, he can go up through them one at a time and tackle each specific area.
So are we saying tonight he's going to look at this and come back at our next meeting with the draft?
I'm talking two to three months from now.
We're going to look at this and give ideas for the next.
Yes, we're going to poke holes in it. That's what we're going to do. So we'll get an email of maybe 10 or 15 pages, then we'll look at that, then we can schedule a meeting and come in and talk about those 10 or 15 or 20 pages. Then the next 15 or 20 pages, until we get it all put together. We'll be poking holes in this one, we'll be looking at the next one.
And you said that we should expect the first 10 or 15 in, you said two to three months? Or is he mean, are you meaning like?
That depends on his workload.
Right, yeah.
I cannot schedule what he does.
Right.
Because he's got a courthouse scheduled with him today, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anything else you want to discuss?
No, no.
I have a, before you leave, I have a 2000, I have a property maintenance code for you.
All right.
That way you can look through it, you can see what we're, what we're doing. Okay, anything else we want to discuss at our committee?
Thanks for listening.
You good? We're adjourned at?
4:50.
4:50.